We've called the roll.
Make sure your mic's on. Pacino is absent. Evans?
Here.
Isler White? Moody?
Here.
O'Toole?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
And Mattamore?
Here.
That's six present, one absent.
Thank you. Ah, are there any changes to the agenda? Not seeing any, ah, ask for a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, Moody moved and Jake seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Agenda is approved. Okay, minutes? Planning Commission meeting minutes? Who wants to give me a motion on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting minutes are approved. Citizen comments, non-agenda related topics, no action can be taken, any? I don't see, is any, somebody's online?
Jackson Lucas.
That, that's just our, that's our code.
Oh, okay.
Our building code official, so he'll, he's just presenting a lot of the items, so.
The, okay, very good. No citizen comments. Planning Commission and staff reports or comments, any tonight?
Chair, just to let Planning Commission know, but we do have you all scheduled for August fifteenth at the farmer's market, um, for some outreach, if anyone would like to join.
Emma, just one question, do you want us to rotate in and out, or do we show up in a herd?
Philip and Derek, how's it been done in the past normally?
I, I would say just to keep it above board, probably cycle two at a time, probably at most, so we don't run into any notification, like public notice type thing we need to do, but that's what we did last year was.
Yeah, we rotated through.
Do, do like half, I think there, there's different hours this year, right? It's three to.
Yeah, it's four to, four to eight.
Four to eight.
Yeah, and Chair, we can always send out a sign up sheet as well, if that would be helpful for shifts, okay?
Thank you. Anything else? Staff? Okay. Disclosures, ex parte communications, potential conflicts of interest, anybody got any?
Um, yeah, I will be recusing myself on item eight A, the variance, um, twenty-five zero 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 seven for the sign.
Alright, very good, thank you. Okay, no old business, we'll go to new business item six B I, T A twenty-five dash oh two I C C text amendment update.
Chair, Commission, um, I, on, online today, we have Lucas Witt, he is our city building official, and, uh, he is going to be presenting this item, he just wasn't able to join us today because of a medical thing, so, um, I'm going to turn it over to Lucas to introduce the item and begin to go through, uh, those items there related to this text amendment, so, thank you.
You guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, uh, good evening, thank you guys for, uh, taking the time to, to hear me out, um, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Lucas Witt. Uh, I'm the chief building official for the City of Laramie Building Department. Um, I apologize for not being able to make it in person tonight. Um, so the, the, the whole reason we're here for this is the, as Derek stated, is the T A twenty-five zero two, which is the text amendment updates to, um, section fifteen twenty-four of the U D C. Uh, the whole reason for this is our state adopts new codes every three years, uh, twenty twenty-four would have been our last one. And this is kind of just to update you guys on, and, and to reflect it, I guess, in the U D C, on those changes, and then, um, also just to reflect those changes for the city of Laramie as a jurisdiction, you know, we, there are codes in there that we may not necessarily ever use, or we may find it fit that's, uh, seems more suitable for the city of Laramie. Um, a few of those, I just was going to kind of touch on, uh, the first one being section fifteen twenty-four, uh, zero two zero D. Let's see, that one, um, there's a few of them on there, but just to kind of give you an idea of what, what these are, uh, section one thirteen of, of the plumbing code talks about Board of Appeals. We have our own Board of Appeals, so we're just, um, changing that to reflect and to match what our Board of Appeals are. Um, that's a pretty small one, we just want to make sure that when people see these in the codes that they, and they come to our, uh, Board of Appeals meetings, that they understand that we're following what the city of Laramie's Board of Appeals rules are. Um, a few of the other ones that have a little more meat to them, uh, section seven oh five point two, point two of, uh, also the plumbing code has to deal with, um, the solvent cementing for piping. So a few code cycles back, uh, they got rid of what used to be a requirement for purple primer to be used on plumbing piping. Uh, they got rid of that, you can use clear as long as, um, at any point, we're, we are able to, um, ask them to, to show us the cans that we, you know, that they're using, so we can verify that it does indeed have, uh, primer, they're also using primer, I guess. This change is bringing back the purple primer, not for the entirety of, um, the, those joints, the solvent cementing joints, but specifically for the joints used from the house to, uh, the city of Laramie hookups. And the reason for that is, we don't air test for that, that section. Um, and so, a lot of times those pipes are buried, you know, at least forty-two inches deep. A lot, a lot, a lot of times it's more like six to twelve feet, and, um, the only way for us to really verify, short of getting down in the holes, and a lot of times they don't have proper shoring on those, is to verify with purple primer that they are indeed using those. Um, one of the other ones, I guess, that, um, more of a clarification thing is the pressure testing on plumbing piping, and that's section four oh six point four point one. And, uh, we've had a lot of, not concerns, but a lot of confusion in the past on what, um, what we are using, the code currently states that it's, um, half of the, uh, pressure, the working pressure on those pipes. That would only be, for most of them, it'd only be like one and a half pounds, or the code does say minimum of three. In the past, we've kind of worked alongside Black Hills Gas Company on their recommendations, and so we, you know, we get a lot of back and forth on the plumbers saying, well, we, we need this, or this is what the code states, and the, and the gas company wants it, so we're just making those changes to reflect exactly what we want to see, so we have a code section to go back on for the plumbers and for the gas company to know exactly what we're doing, so. That one, uh, I believe we went with, um, fifteen pounds for everything except for welded pipe, and then we go sixty pounds on that. So it's just a few clarification things like that, um, that we just want to clear up to make sure we have something to go off of in, in the future for, um, contractors, homeowners, so we're not just using the phrase, which I hear it a lot, um, or I've heard a lot in the past, or other jurisdictions uses, that's just how we've done it in the past. We're trying to make sure we have something to fall back on to make sure that, uh, you know, they're not thinking we're just making stuff up, so. Those are the big, um, ones I wanted to hit. If you guys have any questions, I'm more than welcome to, or you're more than welcome to ask, and, and I can, um, answer them to the best of my abilities, so thank you.
Anybody have any questions? I'll, I'll come up with one. What does the change in the air freezing index do?
So, that was not a, that was not a change that we personally made, or our department made. That one was actually, um, one that had been updated in the codes, and we just hadn't updated it in the U D C. So, the, the air freezing index is just a way for them to calculate, uh, frost depths, and um, the big one is like footings and foundations, it gives them something to go off of, uh, for, uh, for instance, like a, a shallow frost protected foundation, they have certain standards based off of those air freezing indexes, so we can use those tables for us to be able to tell contractors or homeowners, uh, the depth and the type of insulation they would use.
No, but I'm just curious about it, because having dug a lot of holes in my life, uh, to get below frost level, I'm just wondering how much more of an expense it'll add to homes and excavation.
Apparently that, that will not change, from what I've noticed, it does not change our frost line depth, and it, it does not change, um, our, what I spoke of, the, the shallow frost protected foundation, so it's really just more of a clerical thing of us going on, making sure that our U D C is matching what the current code cycle is.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions?
Tom, I didn't know what seismic design category it changed from site to class B, I have no idea what that means.
Sure, so that, that was a very similar one, that was more of a clerical thing, we've had some confusion in the past with, um, design professionals calling in, asking, because in the code section, it references, um, class B, for whatever reason, previously, we put site class B. This is just cleaning it up, so, and if, hopefully clears up all those calls and clears things up for design professionals when they're, uh, designing all of their plans and buildings.
Okay, uh, any other questions? Are there any public comments on this? Seeing none? We'll carry on, uh. Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, well, I'll move to recommend that the city council approve amendments to L M C title fifteen for the purpose of updating, amending and deleting select sections of the I C C twenty twenty-four code within the city code as recommended by staff.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Janice second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, or do you need a roll call for this? Well, aye.
Aye. Aye.
It's a unanimous vote. Uh. It passes, text amendment update, T A twenty-five dash oh two passes unanimously. Alright, next one is resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five, North Fourth Street Urban Renewal Plan and Project, Fred, are you gonna, oh, Todd's gonna take it, alright.
I hope that jubilation comes with a positive vote too. Chairman Mattamore.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Mattamore, uh, Planning Commission, it's a pleasure to be here today. Um, as I was rereading and preparing myself for today, you know, it's just a little bit under three years that we started the Urban Renewal Agency, and we finally have our first quote unquote, plan and project that we're bringing forward today, and it's a, it's a pretty exciting time for us. Um, I think we've all been through it enough, a little bit of, uh, upfront, is that the Urban Renewal Agency allows for, uh, how do I say, uh, different opportunities for tools to try to spur development. Um, for this particular one, we're focusing on tax increment financing, which is a tool that uses, uh, tax, property tax that may accrue beyond the point of equalization to help spur development and do public improvements in the area that we have, that we have chosen. So before you today, you have the North Fourth Street Plan and Project, um, resolution twenty twenty-five oh five that focuses on that, uh, resolution and talks through the different parts of what we're doing. Uh, to remind everybody what we're working on is, uh, Wyoming statute, section fifteen nine, one oh one through one thirty-seven, I believe, is where the Urban Renewal Code is at. But if I can direct your attention to the actual plan and project, um, we'll go through some of the parts and pieces, I will let you know that, um, I will define for you at the end, the difference between plan and project, and then I will also talk to you about why we're not including residential properties at the end of the presentation, as I work my way through the plan and project. Um, the area we're talking about is North Fourth Street, as you look at the map, if you look at the urban renewal boundaries, uh, we had originally contemplated in the initiative resolution that, uh, North Fourth Street Plan and Project only included that block between fourth, fifth, fourth and ninth, and Canby and Soli. Um, since that time, in the public meetings, we've actually expanded that to include a few of the commercial properties that are surrounding that. Some of those include the back half of the lot that is with where the Rocky Mountain Car Wash is, the commercial trailer park in that area, um, the old Thunderbird Motel, which is now owned by the Laramie Soup Kitchen, and then Sunbelt Rentals and the old Fortman Supply have all chosen to be part of the project. For these properties that have chosen to come in, they won't see any difference with this, just because it's part of an urban renewal plan and project, doesn't mean that their property taxes are going up. Now, as development occurs, absolutely, property taxes will go up, because it's based on the valuation of the property, but these projects are just included in the plan and project and all portions of the street, so that we can actually use the funding that's garnered through this, uh, the tax increment financing to do the public improvements in those areas that we're hoping to tackle. Um, we had initially started with a condition survey that, again, originally focused on just the park and Fourth Street to Ninth Street, the Soli to Canby boundaries, and since then, if you look in the plan and project, you'll notice that we expanded it out to include areas around those other properties. You'll see things like a failed curb and gutter, failed sidewalk, dilapidated buildings, just, uh, areas that have caught, have, uh, gone, become derelict in nature and aren't doing that, you'll even see a piece of property that doesn't even have sidewalk on it, that could all be part of tax increment financing improvements in this area to help bring up the area for development. Um, urban renewal activities are authorized and have been authorized through resolution and ordinance, and this is the process that we're going through, it was, it was efforted and approved by the Urban Renewal Agency on June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. We go to the Planning Commission, there will be two notices, uh, legal notices in the paper, and then we'll be at city council on August fifth, provided that we get positive recommendation from the Planning Commission today. The tax increment financing, what we have identified as the potential, uh, uses of the tax increment financing, I'd like to go through this part, so it's important, is that we will be able to improve any street, curb and gutter and sidewalks and rights of way adjacent to the subject property, and that gives us the ability to, I think it's always bad when you fix curb and gutter on one side and don't address it on the other side of the property or side of the street, and so that gives us that opportunity. We can relocate public or private utilities, we can relocate sewer and water, we can relocate stormwater, we can relocate the private utilities, gas, electric, uh, cable, those type of things. Uh, we can construct other public improvements, detention facilities, we can remediate environmental contamination, which we're about done with the phase two right now. So I don't know that we see a ton of environmental contaminants, but if we do find any, we can remediate those. We can restore, improve and demolish structures that have fallen into disrepair and demolish dilapidated buildings, and to the maximum extent possible, uh, facilitate economic development, site beautification, including park improvements. And it's really important, uh, statute fifteen one actually talks about urban renewal agencies and their importance and the relationship to parks and recreation and recreational facilities, which is, for me, being a parks and recreation guy, is amazing that back in the fifties and sixties, they thought that parks and rec were so important, they would include it in an urban renewal agency, so they're really proud to have that in there. Um, the tax increment financing, we're setting this up for twenty-five years. Uh, the reason we opted for the twenty-five year term is because, um, right now, we are working with a developer, as you guys are probably all aware, on the North Fourth Street pro- property that the city owns to build in multifamily, heavier density residential, maybe residential over commercial. Um, those projects take time to get going, and as you collect the tax from the tax increment financing, you know, early on, it's got a real low growth, until the properties and the pieces are on there, the improvements are made, isn't it, when you see the property tax go up, which recoups. And for us right now, with the limbo that we're in on some of the things, we feel like the additional five years gives us that runway to get the infrastructure and hopefully get the projects in, and garner as much of that tax increment as we can, as we move the project forward. I will note, even though the city will own that property probably through this process, that the property will be taxed, because it will not be used for municipal purpose, so it will be taxed at the regular property tax rate. A few important things is that this, uh, project is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Nothing we were planning, it requires a change in the comp plan, and it is all allowable under the current zoning and future land use restrictions. I made this really vague, because my eyes aren't so good anymore, so I gotta be able to see that. Um, some of the things that we've really had, um, as far as conformance, we talk about, uh, the criterion, and that the relocation of families who will be displaced from the urban renewal area in decent, safe sanitary dwelling accommodations. Right now, this is a differentiate, differentiation as it makes us. We don't have any specific projects planned for any of the additional properties, right now, we only have a project planned for our property, which is the city's property, which does not displace any residential units. If a project comes in that does displace anybody that's in a residential unit, then that project will have to address individually the relocation of families to safe, adequate, uh, living arrangements that will not displace them or make a hardship on their, their relationship. Um, so it's really important to understand that the urban renewal plans can conform, bless you, conforms to the general plan of the municipality as a whole, uh, gives due consideration of the provision of adequate park and recreational facilities, and that it affords the maximum opportunity consistent with our needs. Um, it's well documented that housing and housing development is a need of this city, and that's going to help us out with our documented needs. We had some great public engagement with this outreach, uh, sure, a few of you came down through it, we held a public meeting down at the, uh, North Fourth Street facilities, and it was one of the best public meetings I've had, I think we had a little bit over sixty people come through, which sounds sad when you're in a community of thirty-two thousand people, but when you host a bunch of public meetings and you have two or three people come through, to have sixty plus come through is really important, so. That was exciting, we also did do a survey related to this, because there was a little bit of a time gap between the public process, when we had the pub, meetings and the survey, and the survey basically just corroborated what people are looking to see. Multifamily housing, pedestrian plazas, live work units, townhomes and office spaces, what they're looking for. With that being said, um, I wanted to talk to you about the, the lack of inclusion of residential properties, we did have a request from a few residential properties around the park to be included in the urban, in the tax increment financing. The reason that we chose not to include them is because the basis of tax is set at a certain level, and as you know, the state of Wyoming's going through this kind of property tax abatement change, and the last thing that we want to do is actually set the point of equalization, and then to have the state make more changes to where the property tax drops. And then we have to build back up through the development that goes on to get above that point of equalization again. So it's much safer for us to just include, include commercial properties and not single family residential, because that's where the property tax cuts have been coming, so that we don't see a drop that we have to make up through the development of this before we see the, the growth in the tax increment financing. I'm not sure if I explained that very well, but it, it does have some valid reasoning, and is, is a, I believe, a smart, smart application of tax increment financing for this project. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? I've just got a, a couple of them, uh. Just the soup kitchen plan on tearing down the motel and re, or just repurposing it?
Uh, Chair, I, I'm, we are unaware, I would assume they're going to tear the hotel down, but we are unaware, until they submit a plan and project, we won't know. The hard thing about the soup kitchen, although they want to be included, which if there is overdraw, it can be used to improve the curb gutter and sidewalks around their building, more than likely, there'll be a non-tax entity. So, they may not generate any property tax through a project, but they did ask to be included in the proper, in the, um, project, which we were happy to do so.
Yeah, well, at first, when this first came up, I was vehemently opposed to it, having been opposed to U, URAs, having seen the evils that they perpetrated back in the sixties and seventies, but this is a, this is a whole different kettle of fish. And I, I strongly support this project. Couple of other questions, you moved the weed and weed people into the paint shop?
Uh, oh, Honorable Chair, the Integrated Pest Management folks, which is the mosquito control and the, and our weed and pest department, they've, they're using that entire shop now, yes.
Oh, okay, why'd you paint it black? Did you get a deal on black paint?
Uh, Honorable Chair, they got a, they, they got inspiration from what Fortman's did across the street in their remodel, and, um, it actually, when I go by it, it's, it's a very attractive building now, and the work they've been doing around the outside's really helped.
Oh, yeah.
We were also able to do some remodeling on the inside of the building and get proper lab spaces, if anybody wants to see how you count ten thousand mosquitoes, let me know, I'll take you up there, and we'll show you how you count ten thousand mosquitoes.
Okay, uh. I understand why you didn't include the residence, surrounding residential, because basically property tax is in a total limbo, we're waiting the results of the next election, and uh, you actually, this project actually turned Chelsea, the assessor, into a supporter rather than being opposed to it, so, I, I think this is a good project, I think it's, I think it's a good idea, and I think this, uh, T I F will eventually work out.
Yeah, Chair, if I could, had, you know, the, the people that I get to work with, first off, I was remiss in not recognizing that my Urban Renewal Agency Chair, Fred Schmeckel, is here today. Um, plus, you know, I get to work with some amazing people on the Urban Renewal Agency, which have really worked hard at educating and meeting with people and talking to them about, kind of like we did with yourself, and educating about what this new Urban Renewal Agency type of stuff works, and how it looks, and how it should be, not that urban renewal of the fifties and sixties, maybe even the seventies that you saw. Uh, plus, uh, in working with Derek, he spent quite a bit of time with Chelsea over there, talking through how projects are going to work, how, how we're going to know what's happening, how we'll keep her apprised and make sure that we've got this going, so, um, we really, although it's taken us about three years to get here, we purposely kind of took a slow roll to this so that we got it right the first time out, and I believe this project is the exact right first one for the city of Laramie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah.
So you mentioned Fortman's, so, so that property got pulled into this plan and project?
Correct, yep.
So what, um, how, how, how does that kind of happen, and what, what would you plan on, h- how would that property get developed and re, reformatted?
So, by including them in the initial tax increment financing district, the funding from their specific project, if it leads to increased property taxes through a separate agreement, could be used to re-improve, improve some of their things, uh. Items that can be included typically on a commercial building is the facade, the curb gutter sidewalk, water, sewer, and those pieces, so it can be used to do that, we, they, they don't have any specific plans for development at this point, right? They've done some cleanup, I believe that building's probably going to be going up for sale, but the next people might raise it down, and when they raise it down, they may need some stormwater, uh, some things for stormwater, or maybe there's ADA parking or offsite parking that they'll need to have, that the future tax increment from their specific project could be used to provide, I would probably say loan security, to get those done for them.
So obviously, the city's not buying the property, you're taking over, it's just they're getting sort of involved in the, in the process.
Through this, they're getting the allowance to submit a project in the plan area, yes.
Two, one other question, did, uh, building owner where Dave's guns moved into cross from Fortman's, are they included in that?
That, they're on the map, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Donald?
Yeah, maybe it's premature to ask this, but is there going to be any changes, or any changes planned for Fifth Street? That segment of Fifth Street that goes through the park?
Uh, Honorable Chair, through you, we absolutely do have plans for changes to Fifth Street, which would probably include some kind of a paving, uh, it's going to take a, uh, specific set of specifications due to the G I P and the expansive soils in that area, but the intent is, as development goes, that Fifth Street will begin to be either dead ended or improved as we move through the project plan.
Yeah, second question, what's going to happen to animal control? I think I understand that animal control is going to move from its current site. Uh, any kind of timeline on that, or is Uh, any kind of timeline on that, or is that just still too far in the distance?
Chair, we actually have just discussed that recently with the police department and the lieutenant that's in charge of that. Um, we are making plans and start requesting funding now to replace the animal control facility. Um, so the animal control will probably end up with a new facility out of this at an undetermined location. Could be in a similar area, maybe up off this street behind the ball field. Could be in a completely different area in town, but they will more than likely end up with a new facility out of this. Uh, there is also some discussion from the development group with potential. Way to locate the animal control within their development as we move forward.
And last third question. Uh, this may be just Laramie legend, but uh, my understanding was that the. The Ponder Lake in Leboni Park used to be a place where people junked vehicles. Is that a contaminated site?
Um, Honorable Chair, through you, so we've done phase one. We're working on a phase two. I don't believe we've seen anything just yet that has proven to us that it was contaminated site. Uh, early when I came here, I was reviewing some of the historical documentation and. Is mapping correct from that history and how it looks? Truthfully, I believe that the old. Uh, depression or lake that was the dump site, maybe a little bit closer to Third Street than it is to Fourth Street. But there's no way to really know. Uh, my parks guys do tell me every once in a while that when they work in Leboni Park, occasionally they dig up a car. A car hood or a bumper or something. So yeah, stuff does show up. Um, unfortunately, I call it the human condition is sometimes we do not know. What problems we cause by being humans. But uh, I believe that through the phase two that we're secure in that it is not a contaminate contaminated site in the form that it can't be dealt with. Uh, more than likely, there'll be no basements. Everything will be slab on grain. As long as we can get compaction, then we'll actually. Encapsulate the materials and make sure that they're locked down if there is anything below there.
Chris. Chair, um, could could you talk? Talk about the drainage issues that that exist through here and certainly Leboni Pond.
Correct.
Uh, is part of that, that's like the a final evaporative destination for for stormwater or whether it shoots out. Goes goes west.
Right. Honorable Chair, through you, there is a flatline pipe that goes from Leboni Lake to the river. Now, keep in mind, a flatline pipe only works as long as the river's down. Right? So if the river's high and you're trying to take water through a flatline pipe to a. A high river, then water holds up and backs up. Um, the Leboni itself, the lake and the detention structure and our whole basins. Are in need of improvements to reduce the amount of flow and the timing in which flow gets there. Um, the facility that we're working with as far as the developers are actually planning on. Raising the facility a little bit higher to make sure that they move out of. The any potential flooding and damages, and that's one of the reasons that we've included. Stormwater mitigation as part of the items that could be funded with the tax increment or assisted with the tax increment financing as we move through. It is bad area, but it is correctable.
mitigation is to improve drainage in that whole plan area.
Actually. You bring up a great point, Chair Moody, is that we actually said that it could be improvements upstream that are going to change the timing to decrease the flooding downstream.
Just question and follow up on that. Uh. When we did the stormwater plan, are we going to uh? Keep Leboni Park high on the priority list? I know it was pretty high originally.
Uh, Honorable Chair, through you, it's actually moving up pretty quickly on the list to. Either be enlarged or re redone so that it fits there. One of the things that a lot of people don't know is that lake at the middle really is only about eighteen inches deep now. So. Even if we dredge it out, that doesn't change the surface water level, right? If I remember engineering thing, we might dredge it out, but it'll fill back in, still be at that level. But. Some of the ideas are about using berms and such to make it so that it holds more water. Or times it out as it leaves a little bit differently.
Thank you.
That um. It's a sinkhole. Or whether it's like a little false bottom, so to speak, um, be. Something to keep in mind.
I'd say it's a spring, right? Does there? I think it's spring fed, though. So you know, springs will come up through the fissures, but and I'm talking to the wrong guy about uh geology, correct? But.
There there's a paper.
Yeah.
Um. And being being a low point. It could well be a spring, but it's also receives a bunch of water from.
Yeah. Honorable Chair, the the lake has been dredged before. And yeah, so we know that it's it's a dredgable position and really sediment comes through, sediment comes through and actually takes it. Uh, the the one dredging project I was involved with was Lake Minnehaha on Cheyenne, where we dredged it from the four feet to fourteen feet. And uh, it's an interesting, watching dredging is a pretty interesting process and. They're very careful, very cautious, very safe about the way they do it. They'll bring in and make themselves platforms to work on. And they'll work off of there and then they'll move the platform off again and and continue working around until they get it down to the depth that they need to. So. I think it's I think it's doable regardless of how it looks.
About salamanders.
The salamanders are on the list to watch for, and I would imagine that they'll have a separate shelf that will lead to their breeding. So.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Uh, are there any? Yeah, Chris.
So what what's the kind of the the time schedule on this? That's some when things might be starting to demo or to build or.
The Honorable Chair, through you to Commissioner Moody, is there there's no real time schedule because we don't have any projects that are submitted at this point. Um, as you may or may not be aware, the developer with the city project did not. Get awarded the low income. Housing tax credits that it was looking for. And so they're going to reapply again this year, and if they're successful this year, then hopefully we'll move forward. Our goal, I believe, mine and Derek's goal is to have. Stuff start coming up out of the ground within five years, and that's part of the reason we gave us that long runway with the timing. As we move through the project.
Just a point of clarification. So. In you said you were going to explain the plan and.
Correct.
So the project is actually the the housing on the city property and the plan is the overarching rehabilitation, urban renewal, et cetera. So you'll be bringing subsequent projects over the years. In the support of the plan, but the project piece is just his first initial. Do I have that right?
Yeah, I think you might have just said it a little bit backwards. This is the plan, the overall plan. Uh, individual projects will come through in pieces with development agreements, other agreements that the planning commission will see before we move those projects forward.
Any other questions? Are there any public comments? I don't see anybody from the public here. None online? Any discussion amongst the planning commission? Well. Chair would be happy to entertain a motion.
So I'm not sure I've got the right language. Uh, so I'm going to section one.
Uh, let me see.
Okay. Uh, I move to approve resolution uh twenty twenty five dash oh five. Recommending approval to the city council of the North Fourth Street Urban Renewal Plan. Uh, and project for the city of Laramie pursuant to Wyoming statute section fifteen dash nine dash one one zero.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh. Do we need a roll call for this one or? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opinion of the chair, it's unanimous. And the resolution twenty twenty five dash oh five passes. Next order of business, six B dash dot I I I dot appointment of a member of the planning commission. To represent the planning commission on the Urban Systems Advisory Committee. Uh, I am going to bow out from that. And I've got too many damn meetings to go to. Any volunteers? I think we had a volunteer here. Jenna looked like she wanted to volunteer. Is that suitable? Agreeable to the planning commission? Sort of agreeable to the staff?
It's not up to the staff. Now, just a chair, if you want to take a vote on that, and that is who you would like to represent you on USAC, that'd be great.
I mean, do you can you talk a little bit about what the Urban Systems Advisor Committee is? I mean, what what the Urban Systems. Amounts to?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. Now, um. Uh, for the planning commission's edification, any members of the public, the Urban Systems Advisory Committee is a group made up of city, county. Uh, and some University of Wyoming people that uh also support YDOT. Um, in terms of looking at our broader transportation system, both in the city and in the county. And what that looks at is where we want to locate our major streets. Um, collectors and arterials are the primary streets that we're looking at. Uh, we're not that group does not look at anything like. A local street like Canby or something like that. Um. And the purpose of that is to establish those routes, establish those locations. So that through federal funding that's passed through down to the state. Uh, we can receive money by designating one that those roads and streets are located on our major street plan. And that we as both the city and the county agree. That uh funding, federal funding may be used for possibly construction, acquisition, design, all sorts of things related to the building of those major streets. Um, and so through Wyoming State Statute uh is how that funding is kind of disseminated and. Many other, you know, counties and cities do this as well, and it's just simply to kind of get. A little bit of our piece of the federal funding to work on major roads. Uh, for example, uh, the most recent project that we have going on is the will be the construction of Bill Nye Avenue from. Essentially Boulder Drive to Corthell. Um, as part of the larger urban systems uh route and extending Bill Nye Avenue. So. Um. It's kind of a quick overview. Uh, I will, uh, whoever is appointed. Um, we'll kind of fill you in a little bit on terms of providing the bylaws. Uh, meetings are fairly rare, usually about once a year unless we have something we need to do related to a project. Um, so it's it's pretty light load.
Eric, I have a question. Is the sewer work on currently on Corthell? Is that? Going to extend up to where the future Bill Nye will be so you can hook storm sewer into it, or is that just? End halfway up the hill?
It does go up all the way over. I don't, I can't remember exactly where it stops, but. That portion of the project is intended long term to help. The broader picture of Bill Nye Avenue and the work that'll be going on there too. So it's all kind of connected. It's a separate project. It's not related to urban systems, but it is connected in terms of it will. Allow for the Bill Nye sewer project and that portion of it to connect in a place that it's supposed to. So.
Thank you. Anybody care to make a nomination?
Approve the appointment of Ghana Hasner White as uh. The Urban Systems Advisory Committee as the city of Laramie's. Planning Commission to represent it.
Or have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion carries unanimously. Jenna, it's all yours.
Can't wait.
It's actually a fun meeting. Yeah. Okay, uh. Item number seven, long range planning projects. Are there any? We have no long range planning projects. All right, uh. The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn as the planning commission and reconvene as the board of adjustment.
Some of.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jake is going to recuse himself. Give him a minute to assume his position. All right. Uh, Philip, are you take? Oh, Joe is taking this one. Oh, that's right. Jake, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Make it so. Joe, go ahead.
Honorable Chair, Commission, um. This is, this was a motion that was proposed to planning commissions ago, um, but it is the same um application. This is an application submitted by the Albany County um for an EMC in front of. Uh, off of the grand side of their courthouse building. Um. They are located within the downtown commercial zoning district where um this sort of sign and EMC is not permitted. Um, and so in order to get it approved, they do need to go through a variance. Um, last time. Um, the discussion revolved around whether or not the size was appropriate. Um, on it, the location was appropriate. Um, you know, was it appropriate with the historic nature of the previous or of the historic building, the courthouse on the site? Um, kind of taking your guys' comments into account, um, the applicant's representative, um, this county engineer. Um, did submit two other proposals there of very varying size. Um, for your consideration, um, all are smaller than the previous. Um, application that you reviewed last time. The application um will need to go through the same um process. Um, we do. Cause this is the board of adjustments, it needs to be a majority of the entire body, regardless of their attendance or not. Um, so at least four members of the body do need to um vote. To approve it in order to approve the entire motion. Um, there was some questions posed to me um this week or today. Um, in regards to what this looks like as far as the vote goes. Um, we can hold off on any of those questions if unless there is questions about them. Um, but essentially, the main thing that needs to be known is that at least four. Members of the body do need to approve it. Um. Yeah, I'll just say, because this is an item that we're bringing back before you, and it was just a postponed item. I won't go into the same detail that I did the previous time, but do stand for questions and the applicants representative, the county engineer is here.
All right, thank you. Any uh questions for staff? Donald?
So if we approve this, does that set a precedent? For other entities in the downtown wanting to get a similar sign of comparable dimensions?
It does not set a precedent. We do look at every. Site individually. This site is very different. The county is about the only building within the downtown commercial zoning district that owns an entire city block. Um, they are only doing a sign on one side. Um, per our code, you can have a sign on each frontage of your building. Um, they they only have one sign currently on the site, and that is they're on the grand side. Um. If that changed at some point, we would probably review it. Any any. Person within the city can apply for a variance, whether or not we recommend approval will depend on. A variety of circumstances, including where it's located. Um, you know, the use on the site, those sorts of things. And so. That that was a long way to say. I do not believe that it will create a precedent.
Well, it may not create a precedent as far as the. Uh, this group is concerned, but doesn't it create a precedent? If we end up with a situation comparable to Lamar where Lamar, at least for a period of time, is extremely persistent in. Uh, pushing for uh. It sounded like it was going to take the county to um. Or the the city uh to at court. So I guess that's what I'm thinking of is once we approve this. And then we have another one that comes before us, and let's say we we say, no, we just want that one sign, and this is for a really special purpose. Haven't we opened a door? Legally?
So there's a couple of things there. You brought up Lamar, and I'll just talk about the differences between a billboard and that first. Um, so. The. A sign, the EMC is related to the primary use on site, so it's an accessory to the primary use, whereas. Lamar sign is a separate use on a site because it is a separate. Business entity of advertising. Um, I'll say that that is a very big dividing. Spot between these two signs. Um, that our department is very comfortable with. Um. Now, will other, you know, in. Now, will other, you know, if anybody else in the downtown decides to apply, let's say. I don't know. Roxy's, for example, since we were talking about it earlier, Roxy's decides to put in, that they would like to put in an EMC. I think that there are some very specific differences between the EMC over there and, and any others that are in the downtown. Most buildings within the downtown commercial zoning district are from lot line to lot line within it. And so there's no way to set it back. Or meet the setback requirements and. The site itself is set up very differently in order to accommodate a, a sign like this. Now, they very well may reference. The sign as the sign at the county and say, well, you approved this. Why won't you approve one in the down, the core downtown area? Without getting into a whole lot of speculation about what could happen without having an application there. I'll say in our analysis of the downtown commercial area, there's just not very many. Sites that could accommodate it in the way that the county building has in their, in their drawings. And so. Yes, they can do that, whether or not it's a concern that we would. That we have in our office. I'll, I'll just say, we're not concerned about that at this moment.
What about, is that a similar topic? Businesses along the Grand Avenue corridor. The, the size of the sign is, is opposed to. Accommodate vehicular speed and traffic and it needs to be assigned to the Grand Avenue. So, I mean, I, I would. Think that any business on this Grand Avenue corridor, if they met setbacks in some of the, the space restrictions. If they came in and said, we want a fifty square foot. EMC. I'd have a hard time saying no. Because I, I don't, I don't see a real difference between. What a governmental agency wants in the way of communicating to their constituency business. Communicating to their potential customers. So, you know, the, the idea of precedence that Donald's talking about is, yeah, if somebody does. Come through with, with this body, you know, be able to say. No, if they met setbacks for a sign this size along the Grand Avenue.
You want to try? Go ahead, Jake. I mean, not to, uh, Joe.
Uh, Chair through you. I think that that would be something to consider with this, if there, if there are concerns or trepidations with that fact. I just don't know how likely it is for that to happen, partially because of the fact that this is such a unique site. It is. A much bigger site with more open space than you are seeing anywhere else in the downtown, with the exception of maybe our own building.
But, but, but open spaces, I mean, doesn't, I, I don't think it matters, at least to me. If, if, if you can meet the setbacks and an EMC is being, being allowed in. The DC zoning industry. And, and if they had a smaller sign, I, I, I don't know how to say no.
To add to Chris's point, what if? Somebody wanted to do EMC of similar size as a wall mount? Now, I know we have different regulations for wall mounted signs for businesses, but. What if somebody was to go with a seventy square foot EMC? Like we mentioned before, let's say Roxy wanted to put up a seventy foot EMC on grand, could we, you know? Where would that go?
Chair. Again, it, we're getting into a lot of speculation here. That's a little bit hard for me to kind of differentiate on. Without seeing a full application in order to make those diff, those full differences. This one here is. You know, through our analysis. Able to make most of these and. Remember, one of the main reasons that we are recommending approval isn't just because of the, the relation to a state highway, which we have two running through. Through our downtown area, which is grand and third. But it's also its relation to a zoning district that allows. The, the use of EMC as well. And so. If we're taking that into account as well, you know, where it's located, what's the periphery uses in the area and, and zoning regulations? I think that we're, I think that. Again. If we're not even looking at the site specifically, we're looking at where it's located within the zoning district. I think that we can. Assume that it, that there are some differences, are, are.
Is that idea that it's sort of, you know, out, out there at the fringe? Really substantial enough to, to deny a variance to somebody that's in the, in the. In the more core third or fourth street corridor, is that really? Is that, is that tougher? Enough of a reason just to say, no, no, it was DC, but it was out there on, on the fringe. I, I, I don't know what the answer is, but it, it seems. Difficult to support.
Any other questions for staff?
So. Looking at. At what is. Variants are, are. Authorized, it says. Authority for consideration granting of variances. The things that, that, that put this in motion just, we don't seem to be. Present. This. As this facility. Particular requirement will create a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship if you use a land in a manner. Otherwise allowed under this code. So, you know. You have to allow, but there was something about how the thing was configured that you couldn't meet a setback. That's, that's where that applied. It truly doesn't. Doesn't apply in this position. We're not seeing anything about property. It means that basically it is not allowed. And. Register land difficult or impossible to use because of some unique physical, physical attribute property. Itself, I mean. If the physical attribute of property is, is an issue here at all. Or some other factors unique to the property, which I, I guess is just because EMCs are prohibited. Is that what is unique about the property?
Chair through you. Yeah, I mean, the full use, the full use of our, our zoning code is not available within the, our. Within our sign section is not available to the DC zoning district. That is the most unique part about this specific one and its location. Parallel to another zoning district where it is allowed. Is the other unique portion to this as far as physical attributes or anything like that? That is. I mean, it is a fairly normal site. And so. If we're just looking at it in that respect. Yes, the zoning district is the, the most different portion of this where it's kind of this. Jutting this part that juts out, which is downtown commercial.
Donald, you got anything?
Yeah, I've got a question for Jake.
Jake, do you want to make your presentation first and then go for questions?
Uh, sure. Thank you. Not necessarily. I mean, we've been hashed through this three times like Philip has said. I, I don't think it's. It warrants rehashing it out again. But I will say, we did, you know, I reached out based on our, our last meeting. That we had, the commission asked if we could, if I could put together a couple of different options. And based on that conversation, I provided two other options that are in that packet. They're a little bit smaller, but I will state still that unless we're given specific direction on one of those options. We're still proposing our original variance request. So with that. I'll stand for questions.
Donald? How do we know these signs are effective? And more effective than, let's say, email communication. I'm thinking yesterday, I think probably most people here. Received an email message about kidnapped child or a child that was taken by a parent. Most folks rely on. Electronic communication, not signs. How do we know this is an effective way to tell people? Where to vote or how to get a flu shot?
I would say that I don't know how to answer that. We haven't done statistics. I don't know that there is any. But I, I do know that it is extreme, like as Todd was saying earlier. You try to get people to public meetings and you give flyers out, you send people letters in the mail that are. You know, certified with a return and they still don't show up. So I would say that the method of communication is. Not necessarily. Germaine, it's as many avenues of, as. As, as we can get stuff in front of people to, to try to get word out. And this is just another option and another avenue that would be employed.
Donald, if we could. I don't, I can't testify numerically as to how effective they are, but. They must be somewhat effective, otherwise Lamar wouldn't have spent so much damn money and so much time trying to get one built. So I think there's probably some effectiveness to it. Other than that, I have no opinion on the subject.
If, if I could make a comment, I guess. I'm really concerned about the precedent aspect of this, because we've been down the road with Lamar.
If I could interrupt you and Chair through you, if I could address that, because I did some research on that. And as Joseph kind of alluded to, that. We, we use the word precedent and like Lamar used it as a reference. And then after they got down. Through the process, the city didn't back down and just throw them the golden bone they were asking for. And they saw that their case didn't have merit and they didn't want to go to court. It wouldn't have had precedent to be able, so precedent is only. When it goes before court and a judge says you are mismanaging or you are not applying the, the. Code equally between these two things. That is what sets a precedent, not. Whether somebody comes in and says, well, you've set a precedent, so now you have to give me what I want, because you gave somebody else what they wanted. I just wanted to make that a little bit of a distinction.
I guess, I guess I disagree because here, okay, there's a, there's a special location. But it's being done by the city. I can see a very effective argument being made before the court to say that. This is vital to our business and business is what community keeps communities viable. And you're in the way and why should the, why should. County government get a sign like this and we as a business trying to employ people or keeping people employed don't have that permission? And so that's, that's what bothers me and that's why I'm going to vote against any sign.
Right, but you would agree that the precedent is set at the judicial level, that it has to go before a court and the judge has to decide. Am I misrepresenting that? I mean, that's what I kind of have through my research and understanding and. Limited legal knowledge is, you know, that's what the precedent actually means. Not whether someone thinks there's a precedent or. So it's a little bit of a gray area and we are not lawyers. And so, but we are. Seated as a quasi judicial body. It's a little bit different, but again, I don't think that this is. Going to create a precedent that will. Last, so, yeah.
So, so Jake, on. The, the requirements to grant the variance, we have to agree with A, B, C, D, E and F. And if any one of them doesn't, doesn't pass muster, we're supposedly not supposed to grant the variance. In item, item G or E. It says, uh, will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. It's, it's, it's my opinion that the EMC is detrimental to public safety. Due to the design purpose of visual distraction on, on Grand Avenue and the unfortunate. Location of four major cottonwood trees. That, that break up the sightline of, of the sign for west, westbound traffic. It visually, I, I just don't think that's a, it's a good location for a sign of this type. And I, and I think it's a, there's a public safety component that I, I don't, I don't agree with. Can, can you assuage my, my concerns about, about someone driving down the street? And getting close enough to read the sign and then boom, tree, boom, you know, gap, tree, gap that, that that won't be. More of a visual distraction than you, you want to see someone driving westbound on, on grand.
I, I think so. So I'll start with injurious to the neighborhood. So if we, as we discussed last time, the, the shape of the zoning district right around the courthouse. Is kind of an island to itself. It goes across. The Grand Avenue. The right directly across the street where the post office is, is a business zoning district where the EMC is allowed. By use. The. Page three. Went right past it, okay. So and then the, where we're sitting. Here or the, the jail, the courthouse, jail and the parking lot right next to the. To the west of the site would be permitted by use. And so the, the injurious to the neighborhood. Is, I, I think that there's reasonable allowance to state that it isn't going to be injurious to the neighborhood. Because a sign could go on all. Basically all three sides of, of the courthouse location by permit without a variance request. And then, but as far as like the. The trees go. And the. As you say, the kind of seeing it and not seeing it. I don't know that that's going to necessarily be an issue. I mean, I, I share your concern that it might be an issue, but we've put the. Uh, the wheeled signs out in similar locations where the trees are and people seeing it and the trees kind of. You know, causing a little bit of a distraction, but if you go to other places in other towns. Where there are a lot of trees, they have the same scenario and there's not, you know, I mean, I can't say for sure because I lived there, but. There's not crashes all the time because of that. And I think people, to a degree, learn how to drive or learn. Adjust, adapt to driving in different conditions. And, you know, there's, there's always a. In traffic engineering, there's always the. Driver expectation, right? When we change something, that changes the driver's expectations and then they come. After they see it a couple of times, they, they get used to it. So, you know, the first time a couple of people drive by it. It, it might be different and it might be a little bit of a challenge to read it. But after a while, people acclimate to it and get used to it. And then if there's, you know, hopefully people will slow down, read it, slow down enough to read it and see that there's something out there that's important. Or they might just ignore it entirely and.
Sure, they slow down to read it and then the person behind him isn't paying attention and, I mean.
It is right next to a stoplight, so, you know, people stop for the stop sign at the intersection. And again, if they don't stop for the intersection, then they get rear ended.
What, what, what are your, your thoughts, Jake, on, on the historical aspect? I mean. You know, there is a, a mention in those, those. Those things that we were supposed to agree with about historical. those things that we were supposed to agree with, uh, about historical, maintaining historical appearances and looks and that sort of thing and um, I have a hard time believing that an EMC, when I look at that courthouse lawn and, and the building, it doesn't seem congruent, um, visually to me.
Chair through you, I would tend to agree, although with this project, we just put solar or we're in the process of putting solar panels on top of the building. And the, we had a shipper review of that project and it's a little bit different, but the kind of the nature of that response was that as long as we weren't affixing it to the outside of the building, changing the character of the actual structure of the building and the anything that like solar panels or anything modern was hidden, if we were putting it on the building, was hidden and it didn't detract from the aesthetic value of the building was not a concern, and I think this would align fairly similar to that, because we're not putting it on the building. I understand your concern that we're kind of putting a modern sign in front of a historical building, but we're not putting it on the building, it is, you know, it's, it's a visual or aesthetic detraction, let's say, from the courtyard of the building, but not the actual building, we're not, you know, taking the stones off and putting a sign on. So I think that we, and I think that we have it in our requirement of the contractor to obtain that shipper permit, that might have just been on another project, but, um, I think that it might re- require review from shipper. Honestly, and I didn't do that, so. But I don't think that it's going to be an issue because it's not part of the building, you know, it's out in front of the building.
Well, I have a couple of questions on the, uh, I should provide an alternative here. I think we should at least give them a, a look at, a looky-loo, so. You have, I have the sign and that's going to be set nine foot eleven by seven foot nine, is that, am I reading that correct? Sign, is that your smallest one, is that the seventy square footer?
Uh, the one in the original variance is, I believe, shown on page, um, ten of the original application, that is the seventy square foot sign. And it is, um, and the guy that's standing beside that, I thought he was, you know, the person was give or take about six feet tall, but I think in actuality, they're about five foot three. Because that, that ledger is only just shy of two feet tall. And the other portion there, we have about three foot six, so even if it was two foot, we'd be five and a half feet tall per person, so.
Alright, so which, so what is the set size of the smallest one? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
The size or the height, chair, the, the two alternates are sixty-five square foot each of illumi- illuminated area. The option one, it is a total height, well, not a total height, but a a, a proposed sign and structure height of seven and a half feet tall. The second option is, um, shorter and it is six foot four inches tall. Uh, but it's wider.
Okay, and it's, they're both sixty-five feet and they both started eight inches above grade like the original?
They, they start eight inches above the top of the planter.
Above the top of?
The top of the planter, yes.
Okay.
So it's give or take two foot eight inches above the, the concrete surface.
They're still sticking up there pretty quite a ways. What is the maximum height of the smallest sign? From grade? If it's still eleven feet?
It would be about nine and a half foot tall, chair, I believe, yes. And the other one, the, um, seventy square foot sign was just shy of eleven feet.
So. I understand this variance correctly, we either deny the whole thing or we pick an option? If we're going to approve, we approve.
Well, you could approve the original request, deny the original request or, um, you know, designate that either option one or option two, um, is, is approved, I, I see that, Joseph, is that one of what's on the table? I think that's what's on the.
Yeah, procedureally, how we do that.
Chair through you, um, so the motion on the table right now, um, was to approve, um, the variance as submitted. Um, that was the recommended motion, that was the one that was taken at the beginning, um. The motion can be amended in order to approve it with conditions or, um, the changes that have been, been suggested, you can bring the original amendment to the floor or the original motion to the floor. Um, you can bring a, a motion to deny, um, but the one that is on the floor currently without any amendment is a motion to approve the, the variance.
We have to deal with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have to get that.
You have to deal with that.
Out of the way first and then we can amend it to put conditions or do we amend it when we make the motion? We have to put the conditions on when we make the motion, right?
Or in the after.
I'm just trying to get the procedure.
A motion can be amended before the actual vote, if there's an amendment necessary, um, or desired. But the emotion has to be approved by the body first before it can be taken to a vote, so.
And if it, and if it doesn't pass vote, then, then, if the men, if, if the motion with an amendments fails.
Then it fails.
It's done.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, are there any further questions for staff or the applicant?
Well, I, um, I have a, a comment whether a question
Go ahead, speak freely.
falls out of that, um, I, I, I just, I, I felt that maybe there wasn't enough thought put into this to figure out how to create an EMC, especially one that's this, going to be this large, you know, more than twice what you know, is a, is a, uh, an allowed EMC that isn't allowed in this case, um, to having one facility, one EMC that deals, that provides community information to both the city and the county. And so it, it seems like an opportunity lost to, to have a cooperative relationship between city and county and then the community would know if there's, there's all this problems with communication, no one's looking at their emails and always, you know, all the, the things that that, that you said Jake and, and I heard from a, a commissioner that we need another tool in the toolbox. But if everybody in town in the community knew that city and county information was at this one location. Then you sort of take that excuse off the table, you know, at le- at least the city could say, well, you know, we're not getting people coming to our meetings either and we, we need an EMC someplace and the county's got one. You know, that, that a better plan, planning would be a cooperative EMC shared by city and county. Um, cost shared, uh, uh, a, a, uh, some, you know, whether it's a city property or a county property and take a, a deep breath and, and you know, do it all in one, in one beautiful hand-holding, um, uh, EMC.
It was saying kumbaya.
Yeah, at, 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 at a location that really is sharp. You know, that, that, as, as long as the community knows it's there and that's where they find out about vaccinations and about this, this and that. Then, you know, that's, that's great. Um, and I, I, we're just not there with, with this, with this variance and what, and whether there's another location that might be a little better that, that doesn't have the, the, um, prohibition of EMC like, you know, it could be, like, that, that parking lot that you talked about, this, this is B two across the street on, on city property. You know, would, would that be a, a, a good location? Um. The, um, Albany County Library. You know, it's, you know, still on Grand, but it doesn't have the trees and, and then, then the, the, the library gets involved too. Um, I don't know, uh, what, what, was, was that sort of thinking ever part of the process, Jake?
Yeah, chair through year, it was a little bit and the background on this is this is a grant, grant funded project and the grant's been approved and we have to, you know, expend. I think the deadline is the end of the year and if it is not, you know, if we don't get approval, we are giving that money back to the feds, so. That's kind of what facilitated this opportunity to put this sign in, so.
So this is all Bailey's fault?
Yes, yes.
Oh, so there are tails, different tails wagging the dog.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions for the applicant? Or staff? Are there any public comments? Seeing none?
Final discussion?
Final discussion.
Okay, I, I mean, um, my, my plan is to, is to vote no for the reasons of, of uh, public safety, not, not meeting, um, criteria E, um, that I, I feel um, that still exist, um, there's another one embedded in there regarding historic character, I think that's, that's a reality, um, that it's not in, in, um, uh, compatible with the historic character of the property. Um, I, 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 the precedents aren't in these, um, these criteria, but, but it's a different precedence than, than, than Donald was concerned about, it's just that, um, any, you know, a business that can meet the setbacks along Grand Street that's B two or, or DC could come to this body with a variance for a big sign, you know, and, um, I, I would rather see this resolved in the comprehensive plan and in a code with respect to EMCs in the DC district or, um, or size um, uh, extensions rather than us making that decision here. Um, and we're on the verge of a comp plan, so, you know, I guess we lose the grant, but, um, uh, and, and I certainly would, would prefer a, a, a city-county shared EMC, although that's not part of the criteria that, that we're, we're tasked with, but um, for, for the ones that are that I've mentioned, um, I'm, I'm going to vote no.
Any other discussion? Alright, chair will entertain a motion.
Well, we have a motion to approve, right?
Well, somebody's got to read it.
Oh, oh, I don't know.
You can. If we make a motion to approve, we can vote on it and then make your choice. The motion we have in front of us is to approve that once the motion is made, we can amend it. Or we can, if there's no, uh, call for an amendment, then what we'll do is we'll vote on it. And then you can vote yea or nay.
Do you have the language for the motion?
So, uh, I make a motion to approve the variance as submitted by the applicant based on findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Is there a second? Don't second?
Well, if, if we don't second it, then we have to deny it, we have to go through the denial process.
Am I correct? If it, if it doesn't get a second, it goes away?
What, but, but it's already been seconded, I mean, it, the, the motion the motion is on the table, it's already.
Then it was postponed. So we're back to the original motion.
But it, it was, it was seconded, I mean, it was a, it was a live motion for, for discussion. Right? And we just or the first meeting.
For the love of God. I need to go home and eat some spaghetti, so somebody could at least uh, second this, so we could vote on this and move forward.
I'll second it.
Okay. Alright, is there any motions to amend? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. At this one, I believe we have to have a roll call, don't we, for variance?
Might as well. So Pacino is absent. Evans?
No.
Eyes are white? Moody?
No.
O'Toole?
No.
Schneider is recused. And Matamore?
No.
That is five noes, right, that is zero yeses, five noes, one absent and one recused.
Right, uh, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those are favored?
Aye.
Alright, we're done.
We could have been here all night.
I know.
We're trying to figure out how to do it legally, since we are a quasi-legal body. I don't want any of this.